It is now 7:00 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, April 18th, 2022. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Present.
Ms. Grover?
Present.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Jane?
Here.
And Ms. Faustic?
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Grover, will you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and exiled republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special meeting, executive board meeting, which will be held on April 25th, 2022, and our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, May 2nd. We have three board salutes. Ms. Faustic?
The board salutes Wabonzi Senior Shreya Joshi, who was invited to speak at the TED 2022 Conference in Vancouver, British Columbia, Canada, on April 10th through the 14th. Shreya runs a teen-led initiative dedicated to providing young people with the tools and resources they need to become engaged with the political process. She received a standing ovation as the only teen speaker at the conference. Congratulations, Shreya.
Ms. Jane?
The board salutes the District 204 students who participated in the 73rd Illinois Youth and Government State Assembly. The assembly was held in person in Springfield for the first time since 2020. Students throughout the state voted to elect officials in all three branches of government. District 204 students were elected to office and awarded numerous other recognitions. Niqua Valley Junior Luke Faustic was elected governor, Junior Dax Chandilia was lieutenant governor, and Junior Wan Ru Sun as secretary of state. Junior Zoe Williams from Matea Valley was elected youth chief justice, and freshman Shriya Devakonda selected as state clerk bailiff. Niqua Valley had an outstanding year with nine bills passed. Matea Valley had six bills passed and signed by the youth governor, and Wabonzi Valley had four bills passed into law. Congratulations to all the youth and government students and their sponsors.
Ms. Grover?
Niqua student awarded summer study trip to Germany. The board salutes Niqua Valley Junior Emma Shepherd, who was awarded an all-expense-paid summer study trip to Germany. Emma was selected as a national winner after scoring in the 99th percentile on the Level 3 2022 National German Exam for high school students sponsored by the American Association of Teachers of German. She then submitted essay answers and underwent interviews before being selected as one of 48 students in the country to receive this award. Congratulations to Emma on the stellar accomplishment.
Next, we have our student representative report by Lisa Natatucci from Niqua Valley High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Natatucci. I'm Niqua Valley's school board representative, and it is my pleasure to represent Niqua for you all here tonight. It's been a while, and I'm so excited to update all of you on what the Wildcats have been up to, and I can't help but notice that they seem to dominate the board salutes. We have entered the season of celebrating both our past and present Niqua Valley graduates. As Niqua celebrates its 25th year of being open, there are many people we want to appreciate. On April 22nd, we will be inducting five accomplished alumni into our group of distinguished alumni, including musicians, politicians, advocates, and athletes. We are so proud to call these graduates Wildcats, and we can't wait to see what else they'll achieve. On April 5th, Niqua held its annual world language ceremony, celebrating World Language National Honor Society inductions and awards, Illinois State Seal of Biliteracy earners, and individual language awards. This includes German student Emma Shepherd, one of 48 students nationwide, who earned an all-expense-paid summer study trip to Germany after acing exams and interviews. Congratulations to Emma and all of our language students who are doing a great job. Another group who is being given their time to shine is our seniors. On April 23rd, the class of 2022 will have an in-person senior spectacular to celebrate all of their hard work and accomplishments this year. This is just shortly after the Indian Prairie Scholars induction, where the largest group of seniors in Niqua history is being celebrated for their academic accomplishments. Similarly, the Niqua honors ceremony celebrated Wildcats of all grade levels, who were nominated by their teachers for leadership, spirit, equity, service, and growth. Congratulations, and we are so lucky to have all of you within our midst. Many Wildcats have taken the spotlight over the last few weeks, from athletics to career-focused clubs. The chess team took 11th at Nationals, beating out thousands of players. The Special Olympics basketball team took third at state, continuing their track record of doing an outstanding job. Youth and government held their annual general assembly in Springfield, Illinois, competing to get their bills passed and elect their next leaders. Congratulations to our own Luke Faustic for being Illinois's next youth governor. Another congratulations to Wan Ru Sun and Dax Chandilia for winning executive positions. In DECA, we had 15 Wildcats qualify for Nationals, including Calvin Yi for winning the stock market game. Similarly, BPA saw 17 qualifiers for Nationals, with six Wildcats taking first place in their events. Meanwhile, I got to this building for the first time without my GPS today. We are constantly impressed with the achievements of every Niqua student, and we hope they continue to make us proud. This week, the senior class is holding its annual blood drive in honor of Jake Jurenek and Franco Patino, two Niqua alumni whose lives were tragically cut short. As we approach the end of this month, the Niqua Valley Theater Department is putting their finishing touches on their performance of Grease, which will occur from April 28th to the 30th. Thanks for all of their hard work, and we hope to see you all there. It's been a pleasure speaking to you all tonight. Thank you for listening. Stay safe and healthy, and as always, go Wildcats.
Okay, our next agenda item is to pass out awards for our outstanding STEP state championship teams.
Okay, so first, I'd like to recognize our STEPs players. Aya Altikiti? Sure, no worries. Jackie Boland? Austin Cleary? Amiri Coleman? Mia Gioto, or Gioto? Ryan Hee? Jeremiah Kendrick? Katrina Kovach? Albert May? Emiliano Perez? Johnny Smith? Andrea Vallejo? Ryan Ward? Sarah Skar? We'd like to also recognize our coaches. Ryan Loetz? Margaret Boltman? Kendra Gill? Felicia Ackman? Sarita Baghri? That's it, okay. And moving on to Matea Valley and Wabonzi. Oh, oh, take a picture? Oh, they're not.
All right. Well, in the first time in a very, very long time, we have no public comment tonight. I can't even tell you the last time that happened. So, we will move on to our consent agenda and superintendent report, and we will start with the superintendent report. Dr. Tally?
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie community. I will start off by saying that I'm happy to announce that for the 11th time, Indian Prairie has been counted as one of the best communities for music education, as awarded by the National Association of Music Merchants. Recipients are selected using an extensive annual survey that evaluates funding, participation, opportunity, standards, community, facilities, and other factors that affect access to comprehensive music education. I want to thank all of our music teachers for the work that they have done that supports us winning this award. I want to remind our community about the annual Team IPF run that will take place in October. This is a time for you to sign up for the run. I am looking forward to the run and know that many of our schools and staff participate in the program. I'm hoping to do mine faster than I did last, last time. If you have not registered, I ask that you consider signing up now. I remind everyone that IPF supports our students in a myriad of ways, to include our robotics program that supports students at all grade levels, our Young Hearts for Life program that provides heart screenings for our high school students, and of course, our annual Fine Arts Festival. Those are just three of the programs. IPS has supported our schools for more than 30 years, and it's a great organization who supports our children, our teachers, our community. Finally, over the weekend, I was copied on an email from a parent to a teacher praising the teacher for what that teacher did for her son when he was in first grade. The teacher being recognized in the email was Mrs. Pettit, a teacher at Welch. The parent, Ms. Lisa Benevitz, was recognizing the role that Ms. Pettit played in helping to shape her son 15 years ago. These positive letters of gratitude are things that our staff will always remember. If they are like me, they put these letters away and look at them from time to time. They mean more than you can ever know. Many times, I am copied on emails about nothing positive. This time, it was a pleasure reading the email from Mrs. Benevitz about her son, who is now part of the Lima Lima Flight Team and has graduated from college and is now working on his MBA. I applaud Mrs. Benevitz for remembering a teacher from her child's past for the positive things the teacher did to shape her son. And I'll now turn it back to Ms. Donahue.
Very touching. Our teachers do need more of that recognition in a positive way. So I now need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through I.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through I as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, please call the vote.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Hi.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, I am going to need a motion and a second to approve the 2022 through 2026 Indian Prairie Education Association Agreement as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2022 through 2026 IPEA agreement as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? I know it was a big accomplishment and a lot of hard negotiations that were done by both sides, so I'm very appreciative of all of the work to pull this together. I'm speaking for the board, too. Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Hi.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Faustic? Sorry.
She gets two votes? Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, our next item is discussion.
We actually want to go and sign.
Okay, okay.
We'll ask Ms. Pop to come up and also be part of the signing of the...
Huh?
Ceremonial signing before.
You look different from over here. Okay, now we will have our discussion item, which is an update from Doug Akarius and Lauren Nyland regarding STEM. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Tally. We're excited to be in front of you tonight to talk a little bit about where we're at with STEM, as it was about a year ago at this time, where we were informed about the closing of the STEM school and quickly thinking about how we were going to further our STEM integration and support the students who were going to be transitioning back to our school district. Our purpose of the presentation tonight, one, the first question is, what is STEM? You can probably put 50 people in a room and ask them to define STEM, and they would all define it in different ways, so we'll talk a little bit about that. What is the current state of our STEM integration? How will we enhance STEM integration across our district, and how will we support students leaving the STEM school? I am joined this evening by Lauren Nyland, who's our Director of Online Learning, as well as last year, the impromptu Director of STEM Integration as well, and she's done a fantastic job of learning, researching, supporting families along the way throughout this process, and so I'm very appreciative of everything that she's done to try to support STEM across our district. So what is STEM? Most people see STEM, and they just automatically think of science, technology, engineering, and math. We see it as much more than that. Critical thinking, project-based learning, collaboration, problem-solving, you know, working together with groups. Some might define it as just the integration of all those separate disciplines. We wanted to show just a brief video about STEM. We're just going to show a couple minutes of this. We won't show the whole thing.
It's the acronym for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, the disciplines that are vital for a thriving economy and a safe and healthy society. In kindergarten through 12th grade in the United States, most STEM teaching and learning focuses on science or mathematics. Comparatively little attention has been paid to the T, the products and systems that meet human needs, and E, the creative process used to design new things. And, for the most part, the four subjects have been taught in isolation. But new reform efforts, like the next-generation science standards, are placing more emphasis on the connections between and among the STEM disciplines. To understand how this trend might affect teaching and learning in the future, we need to take a closer look at integrated STEM education, not just the individual subjects that make up the acronym. After all, in the real world, science relies on technology, mathematics, and engineering. And engineering depends on findings from science, the application of mathematics, and the use of technological tools. Imagine if K through 12 students were taught in ways that highlighted these connections. Would they learn more and more deeply? Might they see STEM disciplines as more relevant to their lives? Could it lead more of them to pursue STEM courses and careers? The answers to these questions depend in part on how integrated STEM education is implemented in schools and in out-of-school settings. Research suggests that implement...
All right. Obviously, you can watch more of that video if you would like to. We just wanted to give a little bit of an idea of where we think we can have the biggest impact of STEM integration in our buildings. When we approached this, we looked at it from a three-phase kind of approach to this, starting this year with STEM school visits, made it a point to get over to the STEM school, find out. We heard from many parents about how special it was, and we wanted to look at what kind of things we could observe there and see how we could tie that back in the building. We also had our elementary library and media specialist directors visit the DuPage Children's Museum, as they have a, they want to support STEM integration and partner with those approaches. We obviously know there's a lot of STEM research information gathering that needed to be done, made a plan to meet with students at the STEM, to meet with our teachers who are at the STEM school. We also met with other staff members at the STEM schools, including the director, Erin Carter, accessing building-level current state of STEM instruction and student experiences, seeing what we're doing, trying some different things. STEM school parent meeting we held. And then Laura's also done a great job of just communicating regularly with families along the way, wanting them to feel like a part of our district and how we would support them through the transition. Our second phase was, we also know as the students were coming back, we wanted to make sure that we provided them with placement assessments. So I know Laura was joined by our elementary core curriculum director, Joan Peterson, and our middle school core curriculum director, Tara Fowler. I also know that we had Jessica Torres from Niqua went over to talk to the students who were transitioning to the high schools about what that would look like. We did make some decisions. We have 22 students who are currently at the STEM school. Six of them are at elementary. They'll all be fifth graders next year. And then we have 16 who, I'm sorry, we have 22 students at STEM school who'll be returning to our district next year, K through eighth grade. So not the typical transition they might have had to high school at that time, so I apologize for that. Six will be in fifth grade, and then 16 will be in our middle schools. We did, we actually have a teacher at Peterson Elementary School, who was a STEM school teacher in the very beginning when it opened up, and she'll be at fifth grade there. And so we did offer all six of those soon-to-be-fifth-grade students and their families the opportunity to go to Peterson, on which we'd put them all in the same classroom with that fifth-grade teacher there. There's some things we also would like to be doing piloting in that classroom with some STEM integration as well, and so we wanted to provide that opportunity. We felt when we looked at everything, like our middle schools, we would be able to meet the needs of students. We, with that, though, we have five who are going into eighth grade next year. I would say for the transition, that, you know, we advocated as a district to wait two years. Part of that was because of knowing what those eighth graders, what that might be like going to the middle school. So we did provide the opportunity for the five eighth-grade students, if they wanted to select a different middle school, to do that. We would support that at the same time, understanding that they might be going through some social-emotional challenges, and providing that opportunity. We did want to also audit our current STEM practices. We're piloting SAMLAMS. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Developing a STEM leadership team, district-building collaborative kind of leadership team, how are we going to oversee this? IPSD 204 instructional leaders, visit the STEM school, staffing considerations, community partnership considerations, and planning for professional learning for the summer. So that was all kind of in our Phase Two. And then our Phase Three, which is implementation. How are we going to support? And we're proposing a three-year plan. What's our professional learning going to be? We want that to be ongoing and job-embedded, focusing on both STEM and PBL, project-based learning, as well as a staff kind of partnership focus. How can they work together? And a huge part, we're going to need help from many people, is probably developing those community partnerships, and how do we connect them with our schools and with our classrooms? And we know that different schools might be able to connect with different partners. That could be a challenge of trying to connect those partners across the entire district. We have STEM going on all the time in our district. I do think there's been a dramatic increase in the STEM offerings and STEM integration since we opened the STEM school. This are just a few examples that you could see off of Twitter, a couple elementary, a middle school, and a high school. I'm sure many of you see those on social media at times, too, about the different opportunities that students have. These are daytime ones. We also offer many different extracurricular opportunities at the same time. But we did a lot of trying to look at, what do we have? Some things happen in pockets. Some things happen consistently across our schools, and that's really where we're trying to target is, what can we do consistently across our district? So when we started to look at what is our current state of STEM in IPSD 204, you'll see here, K through five is in the red, six through eight in the orange, nine through 12. And you're going to see some things are consistent. We've been very fortunate that our curriculum adoption for science and those NGSS standards really has a strong focus on STEM and STEM integration, which has been great. Curriculum-wise, we have the courses that we offer in our high schools with engineering and technology, coding, emerging technology, computer science, cybersecurity, all have a solid, you know, STEM focus and integration, along with many of our science courses. We do maker spaces at both elementary and middle school, focusing on computational thinking. At elementary, we do things with world of work and career exploration, and we also have after-school opportunities with robotics. Middle school, that grows with additional things we do in the classroom, like our Project Lead the Way courses, but we also have many more extracurricular opportunities, as well as different technology courses that we're able to offer there, and that only expands as students get more focused and interested in those things at the high school level. So when we look at this, it caused us to really think about where do we need to focus. It also led to us, after we went to the STEM school and had some meetings there with staff members about where, where can we really try to prioritize our focus in the district? And with that, I will turn it over to Lauren Nyland.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and board members. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I think we have some great things to share with you. I know I'm excited about it. So as we gave you already an overview of our current state and kind of the work that we've done up until now, we really came to the understanding that we really wanted to provide a very immersive, intentional opportunity provide a very immersive, intentional opportunity for our K-5 students. And we're going to do that through our goal, which is to provide a full immersion STEM learning experiences for grade K-5. You're going to hear us say that a lot. It's important that we focus on that continuum from kindergarten through fifth grade. That was one of the takeaways we received from the STEM school, that continuum and that progression year by year was very powerful for students. So we wanted to start with our youngsters and work our way up. Also, the description, I'm going to read it, but I also want to just point out a few words in here that are really the most important ones. The STEM experiences will be intentionally integrated into our classrooms in grades K-5. Teacher leaders will take part in intensive professional development for STEM teaching and learning. Focus on PD will be an inquiry-based teaching and learning, and PBL, project-based, problem-based learning, however you want to say it, for sustainable instructional change. I just want to focus on intentionally integrated. I think Mr. Akarias already mentioned that we're doing so much STEM. Our teachers are amazing, they're innovative, and they're already doing a lot. We are really taking an intentional systemic approach now to really build on what's already happening in the classrooms. So that, as well as just that intensive professional development, we know teachers learn best with each other, and continuing to learn and come back and reflect and come back. So it's not going to be a one-and-done. This is something that we want to continue on, wait after all of us are gone. So that's sustainable instructional change, that transformation has to happen with our teachers. So as I mentioned, we've learned a lot of great things from the STEM school. Another big takeaway was their thematic approach to instruction, which is really kind of what you just saw in that STEM video as well, about really bringing it all together. So it's not, math is in separate, ELA is in separate, sciences in separate, social studies, and so forth. So one of the ways that they suggested, and they started diving into this year, that I thought was fabulous, and as a former fifth-grade teacher, I'd be all over this. So tonight, we thought we'd give you an example of what this will look like for a teacher. We're going to show you, kind of talk you through grade five, and then also what it's going to look like and sound like for students. So when, these happen to be real, sustainable development goals out of the United Nations. There are 17 of them. What the STEM school has been doing is focusing on a couple of different ones, however they've approached that, I'm actually not sure. But we would look at it, you know, as an example. Now, this is Laura's example and Doug's example, not necessarily one of our teachers, and they're the experts. But if we were looking at, just for an example, if we were to focus at fifth-grade level at the seventh, the seventh goal, which is, I can't, affordable and clean energy, there goes my eyes. I pulled that one out because I, as I looked at all of the core subject areas, this really seemed to be one that would integrate easily. As you probably already know, all of our curriculums have an inquiry piece to it already. So this is just a way to build upon that in a thematic way. So we've also learned that good, strong PBL is authentic. It's bringing in partnerships, helping kids make connections to the classroom and outside of the classroom. So for instance, one possible driving question could be, how can we help make our community be environmentally sustainable? You might notice that that's a heavy question, but our fifth graders will probably come up with many, many more ideas than we could even think of. Also to mention that good, problem-based learning, project-based learning, we've found is really an ill-structured question, that there is not one answer to. So it's not a time when teachers or students can fall into, I just have to find that right answer. This is, this is a time where there's multiple solutions to a problem. So if I was a fifth-grade teacher in my classroom, and this was brought to me, I would look at it from social studies, ELA, science, and math. You'll see on here, this is specifically just from our curriculums, and you can see if we looked at that driving question, that social studies, global impact that we're asking kids to talk about and learn about, they have to understand what global impact is. So they would do that as partly through that thematic approach of looking at that sustainable goal. ELA, one of the areas that they're looking at is who they are and what is their place in the world, also ties beautifully into the driving question. And then science was, we took a look at the energy and organisms and the place in the ecosystem. Also, that's part of our new curriculum in science. And then math is always there, obviously, is that conceptual and computational thinking aspect as well. And then, as we're going to talk to a little bit more tonight, STEM Labs. And one of the fifth-grade STEM lab lessons happens to be about this monkey ecosystem, and yes, we did build it. Took us a while, but we did it. And basically, it's a hands-on approach for students to really understand critical thinking, and it's through coding, and they're intentionally and authentically diving into not only coding, but also content areas being the science. So this just kind of gives you a big picture, real quick, on the teacher side of it. So from a student perspective, I thought we would look at it from portrait of a graduate, and really what portrait of a graduate looks like in a classroom that is PBL and STEM-focused. So if you think about students thinking critically and problem-solving, as I mentioned, they're looking at an ill-structured problem, one that does not have one answer. So there has to be critical thinking and problem-solving. Communication, this was another big takeaway from our STEM school families, is the, how much those students are used to presenting, it just comes naturally to them, they have no problem with that. They're also introduced to and amongst professionals all day long, which is also, that's part of STEM, but that also mostly is that problem-based learning piece that really brings in that authentic piece. So kids are using creative thinking as well and innovating. They're having to come up with problems, solutions to problems that no one else has. I think that flexible and adaptability piece, I can tell you when I was a classroom teacher, that in a problem-based learning environment is probably the biggest keys of where you're going to see success, that perseverance. You know, when there's that moment of learning that where a student is very frustrated, but not too frustrated, that's where real learning happens, and that's where they have to be flexible, they have to turn on a dime and try something else. So this is that, this is a way to just bring that portrait of a graduate alive. So in order to, to bring together just that teaching element and the student element that we just shared with you, we really want to dive into three aspects of how to make this a reality. The first one, human resources. Our second one is the resource materials we know we're going to need to bring in, and as we've already mentioned, that professional development. Human resources, we have three elements that we're going to focus on, specific to human resources, the one being bringing on a STEM specialist.
Yeah, so we have approached one of the staff members who's been at the STEM school since it opened, who's one of our teachers. We thought it would be great to transition that person back into kind of a STEM integration specialist role. We've already been supporting, well, most recently, two teachers at the STEM school, and so one of them we wanted to bring back in this role. As I said, they've been there since the STEM school opened. And we thought it would also, as a secondary part of this, it would be nice to have a familiar face that knows those 22 students who've also transitioned back and can do some connecting with them when necessary, but really looking at how can we roll this out and keep the momentum going? I would like to say that Laura has all the time to do that, but she does serve in a couple of different capacities now, and having a teacher who's been through this lesson planning, knows community partners, has those connections even at Aurora and at the STEM school at times when we'll need those, we think would be a great member of our team to continue that momentum in us trying to integrate this across our district. What kind of things can we do better? What kind of things are we already doing that are fantastic, that we can get across to other buildings that maybe are not approaching it the same way? So just having that eye that can kind of see across the districts what's going on, and how can we help to both provide coaching, professional development, but support for this to continue to happen across the district? We, you know, we do want to make this as smooth as possible for teachers to be able to connect to at the same time, and that's why we've also talked about kind of a three-year rollout for this process, which we'll get a little bit more into.
Yeah, so let me also mention with the STEM specialist, we have some very strong instructional specialists up here at the district office, so this person would be really integral and working with them as well, and really bringing in all the core subject areas, along with our coordinators of core curriculum. Teacher cohorts, we can get into a little bit more in-depth of what that's going to look like, but I think the biggest takeaway is, we want to bring intentionally teachers together so they can learn from each other. Often, we hear, this district's so big, but this is a great opportunity to really expand on that and use that as a positive, because there's so much wealth of knowledge, and our teachers can learn from each other. So we want to bring them together, as I mentioned over and over again, so it's not just a one-and-done. And as Doug mentioned, we want to make sure we're providing coaching opportunities, and that can be done through that STEM specialist and any of the instructional specialists, myself. Looking forward to that. It's always fun to be in buildings. So I think that's the biggest takeaway, is that we're going to be continually supporting these teachers to help them. And then library staff is always important to mention, because up until now, our library staff has been probably our biggest advocates and biggest instructional leaders in terms of bringing in STEM at a building level, across a building. So they're also going to be very important from a human resources standpoint. Resource materials, we're going to show you, just show you SAM Labs, because it is probably hard to think about exactly what this looks like. But we chose SAM Labs as our way to integrate for a lot of different reasons. I will tell you, some key reasons are, we wanted something that could be easily integrated, it could be a standalone, it could be brought in to advance what we already are doing. We did not want something that was going to be a standalone, that teachers would see as something more on their plate. That's the last thing we want to do. We also wanted to provide our teachers with something, not just the hands-on, the hardware, but strong, supportive software and materials already aligned to NGSS, ready to go for them. So this is, can be out of the box, but it can also be, you can take this and run with it in a million different ways. Support has been awesome with them. So what we have purchased, just to share with you briefly tonight, is one classroom kit, and inside that kit are 12 of these little tiny kits with all kinds of different things. We also purchased, probably important to mention, is this charging station. There's never enough chargers ever in the building, so this pretty thing charges all of the little gadgets that each little trinket comes with, and each piece comes with three, each kit comes with three different pieces. One is RGB LED light. They also, interestingly, come off, come apart, and these allow these to connect to Legos and all kinds of different things. I've seen kids take these, believe it or not, and make a running Starbucks that actually makes coffee, very cool. It's out of my league, but they did it. The kindergarten lesson. But anyway, so these are the three parts that really are the hardware pieces that make everything go. And then inside there are little things like wheels and different little things, and little balls, and all, but basically, what we see is students working in partners, or probably threes, working on this. So that is our hope, to at least start with SAM Labs. That's our way to really give teachers something.
Coding and everything happens through, we made sure it was compatible with Chromebooks, so that we didn't need any additional technology to work with it. So that was also another key component for us.
Yep, and the software, as Doug said, all goes through the Chromebook, and what I really loved about it is that students can build their projects and their prototypes, and then share it with other students. They could, fifth grader could be sharing it with the second grader, and then they could work on it offline or in the library. There's just lots of different ways to expand on it. And then I think Makerspace 2.0 is kind of our unofficial word name that we're calling Makerspaces, that kind of rolled out in our libraries prior to COVID, probably five, six years ago. And this is an opportunity for us to take what we first, what we've given to those libraries, and they've been working with, really to that next level. You'll hear our librarians say, this stuff is great, but we need to help teachers integrate it into curriculum. So this is Makerspace 2.0. STEM School has been very gracious, and they have so many numerous different resources that they are willing to give us. So we said, we'll take it all, we'll find a place to put it later. But that, I think, is important to mention. And then lastly, I know we've already talked about PBL and STEM, but I think what I really just want to share is that this is, the PBL and the STEM are not standalone. Those two pieces have to come together. If we're just providing this and not the instructional piece of it, then we're not really doing justice. And we need to do the PBL and to support the teachers in that, because that is not an easy transformation.
So with that, we do kind of have a three-year plan that we'd like to roll out. One is going to be including that STEM specialist on assignment for all three years at least. We would like to get in a third of our elementary buildings with our SAM Labs. You know, we've already had a meeting with principals to try to start soliciting some volunteers for that. We're hoping we get many volunteers, and that we can kind of get that going across all different types of buildings in our schools, hopefully a Title I building, as well as a big building, a small building, see what that looks like. We'd like to do, really have some regular, ongoing coaching in those buildings, as well as providing professional development for that staff. And then we'd like to increase it year by year. We first want to see what that looks like in that first year. Maybe we can get to the rest of the schools by the second year, but we don't want to bite off too much too early without knowing what does that initial rollout really look like. And I'm sure we're going to, the first volunteers we get are going to be people who really are wanting and interested in that, and that's, you know, then we have to grow that excitement for that. I'm not going to click on the introduction to the SAM Labs, we're going to go ahead and skip over that, because it's, you got more from seeing the kit and the opportunities it can do there. The nice thing is there's numerous lessons for every grade level tied to those standards of the grade level. We have a plan of hopefully getting our science committee of teachers, or the teachers who might be our early implementers with this, together to really see where can we make that as a nice and neat tie and not an add-on in our curriculum? In the, you know, if we're looking for a spot for it, it might be during science time and tying it at that time, but they can connect everything that's going on in their classrooms to that, hopefully during some of those periods of time. So we need teachers to be able to work on that, and we do account for that in some of the fiscal part of this. Some potential community partners are DuPage Children's Museum. We've already been trying to form some relationships with them. They've actually been doing some virtual learning opportunities into our classrooms. Laura's formed a partnership with them, as I said, arranged for our LMC directors to go there. I know Dr. Tally's been forming a strong relationship with them as well. And so we've been piloting some of those things to see where those opportunities are. We know that SciTech, or at least we understand that they're going to be moving to the Fox Valley area, and so we think that's another great opportunity possibly to partner with. Some local colleges and universities, we've been approached informally by some, saying that some things they do there, and that might be a potential connection. And we know that the STEM School, we're doing some partnerships with ComEd and ICOR, and we're going to look into that. I'm sure we're going to hear from other people who have opportunities where we can partner with some of these communities about how, just even to, you know, talk with students about careers in that field, or those other opportunities that we see for students where they can get excited about it. Some of the financial impact, I would say that this is, most of this is going to be cost-neutral, since the money that was allocated going towards the STEM School for both staffing, as well as transportation, and that regular, ongoing finances, we'll be looking at how we can support those in our district. We do see the STEM integration specialist as an ongoing one, at least for three years, but would be cost-neutral from what we're currently already spending on the STEM School. We do see that we need some intensive training on problem or project-based learning. We would look at the Buck Institute and their offerings to support the PBL training. We would look at possibly going, having certain staff members go through their coaching and mentoring institutes, so that we can provide regular, ongoing support in our district without having to continuously try to send or bring people in. The same training, the SAM training and resources, that would be for 42 kits, is that 84,000. We were looking at about two kits per building at least, because they're easy to share. And as we said, there's about at least 12 pre-made lessons per grade level that they would be able to share across the board there. But we might see that we need to have an increased need in that area, and look at how we can budget for that in the future. It's just summer curriculum work, how can we tie that together? Middle school project lead the way, we kind of jumped on this one and actually upgraded earlier. We had a plan, I mean, we should have updated already, and we had a plan the year after next to upgrade, but we decided, let's make that move right now. Our project lead the way middle school teachers were very excited about that. And we're getting more interest in increasing our elementary schools participating in robotics. I just have an asterisk there, because we do share that cost with IPF, as they've supported that across our district. I think this year, we had 12 of our elementaries who were doing robotics, will be up to 15 or 16 for next year, as we continue to grow, so we're excited about that. A couple of those are just the one-time costs, which is the project lead the way and the SAM training and resources. Though if we see that we need to increase those, that'll be, we would- Though if we see that we need to increase those, that'll be, we would come back to the board to talk about that in the future. All right, last thing is just going to be a little bit of a plug. This year, as we tried, you probably recall me presenting about trying to increase our summer opportunities. We do have some challenges this summer as most of our buildings are under construction. And so we didn't increase too many enrichment offerings, but we really want, this is the big area where we're trying to increase the enrichment offering. We're still going to offer all of the summer boost and summer support offerings that we did last year. We have figured out a way to make that work in our facilities, even though that has presented some challenges. A big part's going to be recruitment of our teachers, but we're already trying to work through that. So in the enrichment area, this is one thing we wanted to focus on, which is our STEM Camp. We're fortunate that one of our instructional specialists, Andy Fecetti, is going to help lead and direct in this area for the STEM Camps. So what we're looking at is, this is an opportunity for K through eight students. There's one week in June and one week in July. And you'll notice that we did a middle school on the south side and a middle school on the north side. The camp would be exactly the same both those weeks. So it's just two different opportunities with people's different summer schedules or where it's located in the district. It'd be $125, which is for three hours for four days of the week, which we think is also a great deal. We're going to try to keep class sizes somewhere closer to 10 is what we're hoping for with that. And so we're really looking at, this is a first-time opportunity that we're doing this, so we're pretty excited about it. We most likely will have students, just so we can have as many students who want to do it, we're probably going to be grouping students like K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and really trying to keep that as our focus. We also know students at those grade levels kind of need different break periods and so on by their age. So we're very excited about this opportunity. I know there was a board question about some of our families who are free and reduced lunch. We would look at some tuition assistance regarding this. However, just keeping in mind, there are some things where we don't want to pull students away from other free programming that we've done to identify students through grants, like 21st Century Grant. We would not want to pull students away, we wouldn't want to entice them away from those programs. A free program we're already providing, that would probably actually hurt our standing a little bit with the grant in some of those situations. And we wouldn't want students who we've identified for needing that summer support to pull them away from that summer support for those classrooms. So those would be kind of, a couple of those areas that we would really look at and maybe have conversations about the importance of those. Or we might be able to make both work, depending on the time. That's the, one of the nice things about having it two separate times during the summer where we can say, "Sure, you can take it at this time and we'll try to support you the best we can tuition-wise. And, but we know that you're going to be taking part in the 21st Century Grant programming on this part of the summer or in our kind of academic boost at this time in the summer." There's been a lot of work done with this. We have a lot of people to thank. I specifically want to thank Laura, but there's been a team effort there with Brian Jovanini and Tara Bell and Jessica, who's been our new math coordinator this year. Our coordinators, we have lots of teachers involved. Our teachers at the STEM School, the director at the STEM School, the coordinators at the STEM School this year, our LMC directors, we have so many staff who've been involved in wanting this to be, to do more things across the district in this field. We've also had some partnerships already with some different parents who've really given us some lead into some other opportunities. So we do want to thank everybody for how gracious they've been with both their time and suggestions and helping us really try to focus, knowing that we were kind of on a short timeline to figure out how we were going to do so many things, especially given the circumstances we've been under the last two years. You know, with sub-s shortage, it's been hard to pull staff and do different things like that. So it's really been an organized effort. We also want to thank the parents. The parents gave us some really great feedback of trying, helping us to understand what made their experiences special. And so we appreciate that opportunity as well as the students. Meeting with the students and hearing from them what they're hoping things would look like and, you know, how it makes them feel. So, thank you, and we are ready for your questions.
Right, how about Mr. Rising?
So first of all, thank you very much. You know, clearly, your work has been going on since the beginning of the school year and taking a look at this. I was fortunate enough to be around as a board member when the STEM School was just an idea, before it was even open. And if you could go to Laura or Doug, Slide 9, where you talked about the goal and the description, some of those words stuck out to me as well. Immersion, integration, inquiry-based, that was the whole idea of the STEM School. So it's wonderful that we're integrating this as part of our program on top of the project-based learning as well. I guess, you know, my question, my first question on that is, and if you go to Slide 13, Doug. You know, when we're looking at putting some of this in place, and clearly it's a three-step phase at the elementary school, I appreciate you saying that we want to do this the smart way and in a careful way and by getting that STEM Specialist and the teacher cohorts and the library staff. That would be my biggest concern is that this is implemented equally across all the elementary schools. Now, again, I realize that is based on, because this is a fundamental shift in the way teachers are teaching. You know, so, you know, I don't, is that going to be, obviously, there's a lot of professional development involved. Is that going to be coordinated around those teacher cohorts in those schools and the library or the?
I think that would be our attempt and efforts at that. I think one of the challenges we face is we don't have a ton of time for professional development. And we have a lot of different opportunities that we would like to provide our staff. And so that creates some of our challenges and why we have to look at, how can we support a smaller group? Especially if we want that ongoing coaching. We do envision that some of this might be, some early lessons might be Laura or one of the teachers I'm thinking from the STEM School who might, who I know is very interested in the STEM Specialist position, where they're working side-by-side with a teacher and can kind of see how that rolls out or do some of those types of things. We envision that that's what it's going to take to be successful in this. I don't, we don't, we do not have the manpower to spread across 21 buildings. I'm just, I don't know another way to say that. So a lot of this is going to be, how can we get in there and coach? How can we, we might get, you know, 45 minutes during a PDW to talk about that at different middle but then trying to get across to the 21 different schools. Our size creates some challenges in rolling that out. If we were a smaller K8 district, that could look very different in how you roll that out.
And I'm assuming, based on what I know about the next-generation science standards, is that this model that we're doing with STEM almost plays right into the way NGSS is set up. So it's kind of almost a natural way for, to get the teachers engaged at the entry level in that regard, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things that, one of the great things that we've experienced during this year is how many of our teachers are already really at the forefront. You know, I mean, in our district, we have, our teachers do an incredible job of really trying to stay innovative, stay at the forefront of this. They look for those connections. They know how important it is to have those partnerships and to bring people in. We're already doing world of work in different spots across our district and how can we expand on that? But, you know, so we do think, you know, once we get rolling, it's just, it's, we want to make it as easy as possible as well, that rollout. We know that some people are just going to take it and run, some other, you know, you might do a little hand-holding with on making sure that they feel comfortable with this. You've got to, I think, one of the other things you notice is a difference. You know, your high school teachers who might teach some of those courses, almost all of their training is in that, in a specific content area going that way. And at elementary, they need to be the experts in every area. And so whatever we can do to have, you know, some of our teachers who are the experts in science, how can they help tie where this might fit in naturally? And then be able to connect to these other areas. Whatever we can do to kind of lay that out, I think is also going to be time well-spent, but finding that time is also going to be challenging and then helping people connect to that.
And then just one final question, quick one. So obviously, the main goal right now is get in those first seven for the students, do the professional development for staff. I heard you talk about this and I know some of the partnerships we're developing. But again, one of the highlights of that STEM School was the corporate partnerships. And I hope we continue to maintain those corporate partnerships because they were so important, not only from a real-life experience, but what they can contribute, you know, and there could even be sponsorship there as well. So I hope that we maintain those.
We agree 100%. And the reason why we're saying forming those partnerships as well, we think some of our buildings are already doing those and we're not sure who they're partnering with and we're going to be open to hearing about that. I think the other thing, you know, those partnerships only had to form a bond with one building.
Yeah.
And they had a small number of students who stayed together for six years. And so we're in a very different situation now in asking someone to partner with us to support 21 elementary buildings or, you know, 28 elementary and middle schools. That's where we have to figure out, what are those things that we can, how can we help our partners partner with us on supporting that across our district? I think that's also why we're looking at this, how we roll out in a smaller number because, you know, that's a whole nother part of this that we want to be able to support schools in that until we're doing it, we just don't want to jump and then tell half the school, "So sorry. There's no way we can get to you this year," or two-thirds of them or whatever. So we wanted to try to have a clear plan with that. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'll add too, one of the other takeaways that we had from the STEM School is the partnerships really wanted to feel that they were valued, not just a partner, right? So I foresee us working with our teachers, connecting this to curriculum, then going and finding the partners so that they can feel that they are valued and that they're integral in the curriculum and working with students too.
Ms. Jane?
I'm so excited by what I got to hear today. I, it seems like this is such an exciting time and you have worked for years to get us to this point, although it seems overwhelming in terms of conceptualizing it and then operationalizing it. It seems very exciting. Just a few points of clarification for myself is on Slide 9, you clearly state the goal being K through 5. Does that mean, at least for the next three years, much of our focus won't be on middle school and high school?
We're doing a lot at our middle schools and providing those opportunities right now. I mean, we're doing a lot in our elementaries too, but we do feel like that's where we can really have the biggest impact on trying to do more immersion and integration at that level. A lot of great things are, I think that's why, one of those things in showing the different amounts of things that are being provided at the different levels played into that. But also our discussions at the STEM School felt like our, the best way we can approach this was from attacking at the elementary level on how we're going to start integrating.
And I really appreciated your comment, Mr. Akarius, about how this is not, this is not seen as necessarily a replacement, but more of an add-on. And so I guess I'm curious to know, is this something that the specialist and his or her team will look at in terms of how this might fit into existing curriculum?
Well, that's why we're going to, we've been working with Joan Peterson, Director of Elementary Core, to see, which, can we pull the Science Committee members? Is that a possibility? And so to maybe do a little bit of summer work because they were highly involved in both the curriculum adoption and selection and are very familiar with those standards on where is this an easy tie that gives us an additional hands-on opportunity to connect to this? And knowing that those same people also teach math, language arts, social studies, they'll also see opportunities to connect in those other areas at the same time.
Yeah, that's great. And I had another question, but it is slipping my mind, so thank you.
Ms. Grover? Thank you for your presentation. I think, you know, one of the goals for the STEM School was for us to learn from the STEM School and bring it back and bring back what the teachers learned and share it with the rest of the school district. And that's exactly what we're doing now. We're doing our goal in a systematic way for all the schools. And I think that's wonderful that we're able to do that with the coordinator and also taking into account the kids that are coming back, taking into account the socially-emotional well-being of them. I mean, that's wonderful that this is the way you're integrating them back. Like Ms. Jane had said, one of the questions I had was, this seemed like an enhancement for the K through 5. Whereas 6 through 8, it seems like, because they move from, it seems like it's easier implemented in K through 5 just because you have the same teacher, whereas in 6 through 8, you're moving around to the different teachers. And I know in middle school, we have the PLTW. Do you see the STEM Coordinator working with the PLTW to enhance that program perhaps?
We see that as also an opportunity. One of the fortunate things in our district too is we already have, you know, team approaches at our middle schools. That's one of the things that makes us, you know, middle schools, where they already have, you know, they meet on a regular basis as a team to talk about opportunities for integration and doing those type of things. But then they also have those content specialists in those areas of how they can advance on, you know, whether it's, some things are right there in the classes with your science and your math. We also have classes in technology, but then how can they expand on the engineering? We provide a lot more, I think, extracurricular opportunities as well at the middle school for students who are excited about that to take more advantage of that. But we thought that this needed to be the place where we really targeted how we can best support that. I think if we were asked to try to do the exact same thing at the same time at middle schools, you know, now we're expanding to 28 schools. I'm not saying it's impossible. I think we would have to seriously look at what additional human resources we would need to make that work as well as material resources that would make that work at the middle school level. I think a lot of our offerings at the middle school, especially since the STEM School have opened, have really enhanced our inquiry-based and problem-based learning opportunities there. That's how the curriculum has gone at the same time. As we've looked at adoption, we've looked at ones that promote the inquiry-based opportunities and our teachers try to do that as we look at curriculum adoption across our district, how we can do that. I do think, as I said, that that could, you know, create additional challenges. Our middle schools, so do our elementaries, I'm not taking away from there. I think they've done a lot more than when our STEM Schools originally opened. And even when I see some of the suggestions for grant opportunities that are submitted to like IPF, many of them are STEM-connected at the middle school. And we've also looked at, okay, even if we can't afford it through IPF, what are ways we can support to make that happen? Some things recently happened at Granger with some opportunities that were supported through IPF. So we have those happening across there and we will, and we have discussed in those, how can we extend those across to other buildings at the same? how can we extend those across to other buildings at the same time? We just seem to have more opportunities to support that at the middle school, and maybe that's just because of the numbers of middle schools we have compared to elementary schools.
And I just have last comment.
I hope I answered the question.
No, you did. Just one last comment. I know when I did a tour at the STEM school, a lot of the students loved the collaborative nature, and I think this brings a collaborative nature, and like you mentioned, it ties back to POG and everything, so, thank you.
Mr. Krubas.
Thank you very much for the presentation. There's, I enjoyed seeing that there was a plan, that there was goals, and with some measurable deliverables. And I look forward to the next report saying, "We've made some progress here, we switched, went this direction here." But what sticks out to me is, we might have some resource limitations here, whether it's more kits, more teachers, more time for development. And so, I think it's important for the board and the community to understand that there is a list of things that we want to do, and there's a list of things that we are, we can do, and we could do, if we had more resources. So, looking forward, it's important for us, because I think this is an exciting topic, I think it's an area where there's a lot of growth, especially with our district Goal 1, for advancement, and so we need to recognize that there's a delta there, that, of items that we would want on our wish list, of things that we could support. And we don't see an item on our budget that says STEM, at this level at least. And so, it'll be interesting to see if there is an area where we could say, if we spend X amount of dollars, we could, and do X, Y, and Z, we could have this kind of impact going forward. So, I would like to see more of the resource limitation discussed. You mentioned it generally, but maybe at the next report, we have a slide about that. You know, we talk about some of our deferred maintenance, and it's easier to get a delta on that depreciated value of a roof, to put a number on that. But maybe there is an instructional STEM deficiency area that we have a resource limitation on, that we should be aware of and know, and measure.
Great, thanks. Thank you for that point. We have worked closely with Matt about, you know, we knew this year that there was no cost savings related to the STEM school versus future years, about what might have been costing us to have the STEM school, that we're no longer going to be spending as an opportunity in the curriculum and instruction area that we can use to continue to support STEM schools. So, we'd be glad to show further information on that.
Ms. Fosdick.
I first want to say, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to kind of work backwards, so, I'm really excited about the STEM camp, and I think you guys are going to be overflowing with registrations. I think your demand might far exceed the capability to meet that, but how exciting to have a thing that people want so much. So, that's really cool, I'm glad that we're getting that in this summer. As far as community partnerships here, I know the ones listed here look to be corporate partnerships, or university, or educational, right, because they have money. But, as, last, a couple weeks ago, when I was at the National School Board Conference, one of the presentations that I went to was about incorporating student voice, and one of the ways they did that was through their project-based learning. They had a group of elementary students who wanted to save a nearby lake, and so they started to work with the forest preserve near them, and were actually going out with scientists and doing the measurements, and learning about what they needed to do. So, not only were they increasing, as our portrait of a graduate here, their participation and their citizenship, but they were also driving that, what goal they wanted to work on. So I know that's probably further down the line here, of things where students actually get to select a project, and grade-level appropriate, right? But I would really be excited to see this grow, and to grow the community partnerships beyond just the corporate partnerships, or even just educational, to include things like our forest preserves, right? We have all these other great resources, or park districts, or some functioning of the city council. A way to really get kids involved in our community beyond just their school community, into where they live, where we're all part of together, and to hear more of their voice, even in kindergarten, right? Because kids have great ideas, and students across the board have great ideas. And they are, as we're looking at the sustainable development picture here, which I love these, on Slide 10, kids are the ones, students are the ones who are going to come up with solutions to these, not us sitting in this room, right? So all those opportunities that we can give them to do this, and I thank you for doing this here, with starting off this STEM journey, or renewed STEM journey here, will help them do that. And then my very last comment is just to pitch, because I'm an arts lover at heart, is to just encourage that this also to be STEAM, right? Because all of these things can have that creativity piece as well, and I know that's inherent in here, but I just want to give it one little push.
I believe our SAM labs are actually called STEAM.
Yes, they are.
Labs.
I'm a fan. Thank you.
So, Ms. Dumbing has voice challenges tonight, so I will, she wants to thank you for the presentation. She had a whole page of questions, but she was checking them off as you covered them in your presentation. So she wanted me to share her thanks for all of the work that you're doing on this important topic, so. For me, I'm an engineer, and so I, you know, this is always a hot topic for me, and something that is dear to my heart. I agree with some of the comments that were made, that when I look at social media for the district, I see a lot of STEM stuff going on. I've had the pleasure of being in some schools recently, and I will tell you, every class that I was in had some STEM topic being done with the students at some point during the day. So, you know, kudos, because we, like what was shared, we do have STEM integrated in our classrooms, but it's like a topic that always needs to grow and incorporate and expand into new and multiple areas. I also see the excitement at the robotics tournaments, and I'm very pleased that the elementary schools are enhancing, or more of them are coming into that program, because, I mean, that's almost more exciting than a football game lately, so. And I am on the IPEF Teacher Grant Committee, and see the volume of requests from the teachers that are coming in that are related to STEM. So I think that there is an overwhelming excitement about this topic. I think it used to be more scary for kids, like you have to be good at math, or you have to be good at, you know, engineering, but it's really about collaboration, creativity, problem-solving. And I loved the comment about presentation skills. That is such an important skill to build up in students at young ages, and to have comfort doing and presenting, I think is also an added benefit to this topic. So, you know, I look forward, I also, like Mr. Krubas's comment about, you know, do we have a gap here, like what can we do with more money, you know, kind of thing? Because I do, I do think that we have been innovative in the past, we were like, project lead the way was, you know, something our district adopted, you know, early on, and, but, you know, are there other innovative things that we could do if we had additional resources and things? So, so thank you, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any comments, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so we, since our last board meeting, we had our IASB Dupage Division Dinner.
Oh. I assume you're mic-ing?
Yeah, it is, I'm just not talking into it. So since our last board meeting, we had our Illinois Association of School Boards Dupage Division Dinner. Majority of us were there, I think there was a couple of family conflicts, conflicts a couple of board members had, but there was a wonderful presentation on equity work by one district, and how all Dupage districts are doing work on equity, and making their schools more inclusive and more welcoming for all students. I thought it was just a wonderful presentation, and it just shows you how far ahead we are, and have been kind of on the forefront, but we still have a lot of work to do. But yeah, it was a wonderful presentation, I just wanted to let the community know that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, just that, Ms. Fosdick and I, and Dr. Tally had the privilege of attending the National Association of School Boards. We purposely attended different workshops, so we could learn different things, and we will share our notes with the school board. And we attended, I know Ms. Fosdick did a lot on student voice, and I attended ELL stuff, mental health, and it was really interesting, meeting with the people from the different districts, and sharing our thoughts and ideas, and listening to other concerns that other school districts have.
Yeah, thank you both, or all three of you, for attending, that is always a benefit for the district, and we always see different ideas come out of those opportunities. So thank you for taking the time to, away from your family and stuff, to attend the conference for us, so thank you. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.